This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, if you would, please turn your microphones on.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for April 16th, 2024.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of the minutes with an amendment in the ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone the West Side of Bog Sound Drive from R-30 to R-10. I'd like to propose the word parcels instead of the word lots, 1 through 18, because those parcels, some have more than one lot.
Okay.
Some have one lot. And there's another mention of lots. I'd like to change both of those lots to parcels.
In that one paragraph?
Yes, ma'am.
R-30 to R-10?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay. You'll have. Hey, and I got a second. We'd like to change this parcel, the lots, to the word parcels on the minutes.
Thank you.
Julie, after we make those corrections. I'll sign it. Thank you. Is there any public comments? Frank, we're going to be talking about the rezoning request for Lakeside condo owners. Would you like to speak on that before we?
Sure. Yeah, you have a request for your consideration to rezone one parcel with four townhome units located on Taylor Notion Road. It is currently zoned R-30. The request is to rezone it to R-10M. It is directly adjacent to the northwest of the parcel that you just approved, the townhomes for the Lakeside. You just approved the condos at the last meeting, so the rezoning appears to be consistent with our land use plan. It appears to be reasonable. It's really kind of just correcting something that's currently not conforming with the zoning. I think at the staff level, we don't have any concerns whatsoever with this and having answered any questions you may have.
You're requesting that the B-10, I mean, it's zoned as R-30 and we're going to R-10.
M.
R-10M.
M.
Okay. And we have landowners that have signed off to change that?
Yeah, we do have concurrence from the existing townhome unit owners and one of whom is here tonight.
Okay. Okay.
And then on the other side, with their property on the other side as well?
Yes, and that property is owned by my father's Residuary Trust. And as trustee, I'm in complete support of this rezoning request. Thank you.
And we will, there are a few other properties, the golf course, the Forest Service, and if the planning board makes a favorable recommendation, we'll schedule a public hearing for the Board of Commissioners and we'll formally notify the adjacent property owners at that time.
But as much as they look like townhomes, they are condominiums.
Understood.
Condominiums.
Multi-family units.
Multi-family.
A condo doesn't own its land. A townhome owns its land.
I'm not disputing that, but these are registered with the Declaration of Unit Ownership as condominiums.
Oh, you're talking about the ones that's pre-existing?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yes, I understood that. I thought you meant these that would be built up like, oh, oh.
Not disputing.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
We would like to have a motion to accept.
Motion second.
In second.
Since you're a trustee of the other, you will maybe take it.
Sit's passed. All right, the rezoning request for McLean Investment LP. Just a LP. Would you like to speak on that, Frank?
Sure. The request, as indicated in your packet, is to rezone the parcel located at the corner or at the intersection of Taylor Notion Road and Highway 24. The property is currently zoned B-10. The applicant who is here tonight has requested rezoning to the B-20 zoning district. The parcel's 3.18 acres. It's bounded by other B-20 parcels, the lone B-30 parcel in town, an R-10M parcel in the ETJ, and then some R-30 parcels in Star Hill. The property is directly adjacent to existing B-20 parcels. It's kind of across the street from the Handymark property and then across the street from the medical office on the south side of NC-24. The applicant's here and can certainly speak on his behalf, but the basic rationale for the request is just to expand the list of permitted uses for that parcel. And you have a copy of the table of permitted and special uses in your packet, and you can see the additional business uses that are permitted in B-20 that are not permitted in B-10. B-20 is our most prominent commercial zoning district in town. It's what everything on Highway 24 is zoned.
Now, I know it's for sales and those type of things, Frank. Now, we get restrictions on strip mall areas, right? Strip buildings, or is that what they're called?
Well, there are no specific restrictions on like a strip shopping center. So if this parcel was rezoned, it could be developed as a strip shopping center if that was the owner's desire. And they met all the applicable requirements, obviously.
I mean, technically, if you want to get technical, the lighting building, right? The building that had the light at, what is it, Seaside Lights and Jordan and whatever the other one is. Technically, that's a strip because it's multiple businesses in one building. I mean, if it's done tasteful.
Yeah, and that's really the key difference. So B-10 does not allow retail sales. B-20 does allow retail sales. So if there was a rezoning of this parcel, it could be developed as retail. Could be a strip shopping center, could be a standalone commercial business. It depends on the applicant's goals.
That's under seashore lighting.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm trying to think of.
And the medical center that.
Yeah. I think it should all fall asleep.
Yeah. Technically.
But that's the only two in town, correct?
No. Los Fides one, the gym's one. It's got multiple businesses in there. There's actually quite a few.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just worried, you know, like when you go through Cedar Point, you'll see a lot of empty buildings.
Oh, Madam Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
I'd just like to point out that Manatee Investments is zoned R-10M.
Yeah.
Not R-30.
Well, that's what I said. I said the parcel in the ETJ is owned R-10M to the north of this parcel.
It says, "To the north, Eddie and Laura Fulture and Manatee Investments is zoned R-30."
Okay, I'm sorry. I was just speaking. I thought you were correcting my verbal comments.
No, sir.
I'm sorry if there's a typo.
It's a typo.
So what is this?
Manatee, the striped ETJ is R-10M. R-10M.
That's correct.
Oh. Manatee is, yeah, Manatee is supportive of this request. I just wanted to point it out.
Can I ask you a question? What's the difference between RT, R-10M and R-20 versus R-30 versus, do we have a? Okay, that's what I thought it was. Yeah, okay, all right. So on that, which makes sense on that parcel.
If you might, I have a comment on that. We have no plans today to build a strip center. We have listed the property for rent and probably got 30 calls, but the vast majority of them were retail type. And the only one that we felt had fit the character of the town was the ladies boutique, which we have assigned lease for. So that's the purpose of us getting a rezon. Frank was exactly right. It's just to kind of broaden the options that we have.
Okay.
Can I ask one question? Because I know there's certain commissioners in the town that and I kind of have this viewpoint on certain shops, retail shops not coming in versus other retail shops coming in?
Yeah, we got a couple of calls on a retail shop that I don't think would have been what we were wanting in town, so we didn't offer it.
Okay.
And may I also say real quickly too, your town staff is the best that we've had. And Julie was so kind to get this kind of rushed through. I didn't mean to put her in such a bind, but she saved me potentially a month's work of mint. And it's how I think towns should work with residents and, you know, business owners. So I just wanted to mention that. Oh, we thank you all for hiring such great staff.
Thank you. Like to make a motion to accept the change.
Second.
Ted is first. You second?
Good. Ted, me, or somebody?
Second. Thank you. Glad to have you here. We need you.
Did you call for the vote? I was right. I'm sorry. Did you call for the vote?
Yes.
Aye. Sorry.
I agree.
All right. I voted. Yeah.
Okay, Frank, you'd like to speak on the ordinance amendment, I mean, Unified Development Ordinance.
Yeah, in your packet, you've got this map, which is a map of all of the electric lines that are located in the rear or on the side of properties, and they're all in the Old Cape Cod Red area, basically right behind us. We have a provision in the Unified Development Ordinance now that essentially prohibits fences within that easement area. The language is a little bit confusing, and we've had a couple of incidents here recently where there's been some confusion about that requirement. The ordinance that's presented for your consideration tonight is really just to clarify and emphasize that people are not allowed to put fences within a 10-foot area on either side of the electric power lines. And it's only in those locations where the easements exist, so.
There over at Holly Street and the other street. I've built several houses over there. It's fenced right down the easement.
Yeah.
And it caused me problems getting underground put in. Where I had to disassemble fences and rebuild them at my dime.
Where is this? It's Old Cape Cod Red.
Yeah, the whole area basically right behind us.
Is this 58?
But here's my question.
This would be like 24.
Isn't there power lines running behind some properties?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and if there's already existing fences, it's been there for years, what can you, like, here's the problem that I have with changing certain language. If the fences have been there and if we have allowed fences there for years and years and years, and now all of a sudden you're going to tell somebody now, you've got to go in your pocket and you have to change it because it was okay for 30 years, but now today it's not okay. That's where I think I have an issue.
The problem.
Well, let me clarify for you because you're really hitting the crux of the issue, and I wanted you to have this conversation tonight and ultimately the Board of Commissioners to have this conversation. So we've had the provision in the UDO for some time now that essentially says you can't build a fence in an existing easement. Now, to my knowledge, that's not a new ordinance amendment. I think it's been there for many, many years, and some of you may know more than I do, but certainly been that way ever since I've been here for the last two years. My perception has been here for a very long time. And when you drive around town and you look at this, you'll see some areas where people complied with that and other areas where people clearly didn't comply with that. And so the goal for this tonight is really just to clarify it. I mean, the sentence actually says you got to have your fence 10 foot off of the overhead electric utility line. And so the question that you raise is a good one, right? The fences that currently exist in the easement area, I don't know whether the person put the fence in before the town had that requirement. I don't know whether the person put the fence in and never got a permit and just got away with it. Don't know if the town staff approved the fence, you know, and obviously we can't go back in history and review that. I don't have an accurate count of how many are in compliance and how many are not in compliance. But there's a fair number of each example, right? And so with the adoption of this, if the planning board recommends this and if the Board of Commissioners adopts this ordinance, our intent is not to go back and force any existing fences to come into compliance. I will tell you that there are two examples right now that Julie and I are working with where they have installed them during our time here, and it's my responsibility ultimately to make sure we're performing our jobs correctly and administering the UDO correctly, whether we may agree or disagree with the ordinance. So in those cases, we are making those people move those fences. But I don't envision we will go to every single person who's got a fence in the right-of-way, in the easement area, and tell them to move it. Now, that's something if the Board of Commissioners gives me the direction to do that, obviously we'll do whatever their direction is, but I don't have an appetite for that for exactly the reason you mentioned.
Well, I was just afraid that, you know, and I don't know who's in compliance and who's not in compliance. I really have no clue. I was just afraid that maybe there's somebody who put it up now could not afford to have it moved. Does that make sense? Limited income, fixed income, something like that. And it was put up 30 years ago, you know, and now they can't let out their dog. I'm just using a scenario that may or may not have happened or would happen. I just don't want to see us going back and doing something that we've allowed for so long. At some point, it's got to stop, yes. So obviously, under your watch, you know that everything's.
We're trying, we're trying at least to make sure that. But you all, as a planning board or as Board of Commissioners, you all could take an opposite policy provision, and if you wanted to, you could say, hey, we don't want this requirement anymore. And you could say, hey, let people put the fences in the easement area. That's an option for me.
There's my thought on it. I was a lineman for Carolina Farm Light for 12 years in Raleigh. That fence causes a hazard to the linemen during storms and all.
Yes.
I built several houses over there and the owners went after I CO'd and put fences up. And I told them, I said, you can't do that, but it's their house with no permit. Every time I build a house over there, I have an issue with fences. That is an easement through there for the lineman to get there. So what I have to do is go and get permission across somebody's property to get to the right-of-way.
Yeah. The easement.
Yeah, and you know how hard that can be sometimes?
Yes, sir.
It's like the view. I got one in Little Kids and I'm building a three-story on the White Oak, and the lady's done complained to everybody that my stairs is blocking her sunset.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, you run into all that kind of things. But the ones that I build over there with the easement has caused me great grief.
Yeah, and I think certainly if there's a hurricane and the power goes out, everybody's, it's in everybody's best interest to get it turned on as quickly as possible.
It's something like two, the pad mount transformers. It's in the easement. People like to put bushes and stuff around it. It causes a hazard to the linemen. And the way we were told back, this has been years ago. If there's stairs and it's an easement, tear it out.
I'm for that, man. Man, man. I sympathize. I understand. You're very compassionate. But I'm with Mr. Williams on this. It's a danger to the linemen. It's an inconvenience and could mean a loss of health and property. Freezers are out after a storm and people have a lot of money in their freezers, in their food, and the linemen can't get to the transformer. I mean, people have no business. The easements have been on record since the maps were recorded. And when I see a fence going up in an easement, it just makes me see red because of the danger, not just to the linemen, but to the citizens, to the well-being of getting the power back on. I'm blessed to have a generator at my house, but not everybody does. So I think that this should go a step further, that if any changes are made to any of these properties, the houses
I agree with that.
where the fences exist, they should take down the fences as part of the procedure.
You mean, are you suggesting like if someone puts an addition on the house or something or tears it down and built a new house?
Not just, you know, putting, you know, changing their paint on your house, obviously, but if they're having to pull a permit.
Yes.
That's when, and I agree with that.
That's to add there.
That's the issue of like the houses right there over there. I did pull it, yeah.
Obviously, yeah.
I built the home, CO'd it, and then the owners come back and do it, and I tell you, like, you need to get a permit, but it ain't my business.
And I understand that. And I want to say this because the easement, at any time, the electric company can go there and remove it. It's their easement. They can go there and do it. And, but I agree with, if they pull a permit, then we've altered the property. If we've altered the property, we need to comply. I agree with that.
And particularly if they have submitted a site plan and built the fence in violation of the approved site plan.
I agree with that 100%.
So would this be a zoning permit from the town?
Yes.
Or a building permit.
It'd come with either building permit.
A building permit.
Yeah, I think, you know, certainly if someone's putting an addition on the property or maybe they're building a garage or they're tearing it down and build something new, they're going to need a zoning permit, site plan review.
Anything that they're having to pull a permit for, I agree 100% with that.
What about a situation where maybe someone's building a deck?
If they're pulling a permit.
I'm asking you for clarification on that, you know, because decks are fairly common and that's going to add additional expense to the applicant.
I'm very hardline on this because I have seen the difficulties and I have seen the fences within six inches of each other.
So your desire is that any alteration of the property that.
Requires a permit.
That requires a zoning permit. So we don't require a zoning permit for interior work or painting or anything like that. So anything that basically has a site plan impact, site plan review.
Yes, then the new regulations would be put in place.
For that, maybe, you know, for new regulations for the.
Yeah, if they come for permit, the new regulations.
Them linemen should be able to go down the easement and never cross nobody's property. I had to fix yards over there at Yell Palm because the line trucks went across. I had to remove fence, put fence back.
That's terrible.
And it was all on my dime.
That's terrible.
Yeah.
And I hate that you had to do that. Does that make sense? But I want to make sure that there wasn't some little old lady that is, you know, can't afford something. You know, I understand the one that's been there since the turn of time.
But in my mind, I know several over the last three years. This bottom.
Oh, yeah. And Frank, I know during the hurricane that the electrical company dropped all their debris and they couldn't get to it. They just left it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think it's certainly a valid policy goal. It really depends on exactly how far you want to go with that. I mean, I personally would not want to just send letters to every person we find in violation.
That's what I wanted to make sure that we weren't asking the.
But I think that's a good approach if they're pulling a permit.
They're pulling a permit, then they would abide by the new regulation.
Or if they've done it within the last
Right on the line.
Whatever period of time. How long have you been?
Yeah, so certainly, I mean, we have not allowed any fences to go within these easement areas over the last two years. So that's been permitted. There may have been somebody that got away with it.
Two years and what house has been built, it does not have a fence permit.
Yes, that's.
They need to move the fence out.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we learned that someone did it illegally within the last two years, we would take action against them to enforce that. If we learn that somebody put it in three years ago, we're not going to pursue that.
It's your turn here.
That's right. I want to make sure that we're enforcing the ordinances properly. And if people want to change the ordinances, you have every right to do that, but these are what's on the books.
Right, you want to take. Would you all like to vote on that, this?
Okay, how would you other language?
Do you like to speak some more?
I just don't think this map is very clear. So if we're like saying in here that you have to go off this map and that's what actually goes in the ordinance, I would recommend making this map more clear. Because like the way that I'm looking at it, like I see like a hash line right here and I can't tell if it's red or there's no like color code.
All these here.
But we're referring to this, right?
Yeah, so I think. I think the operative, I think the operative language in the ordinance amendment is letter H. You know, and it clearly says a rear or side yard fence must be set back from any overhead electric utility lines at least 10 feet. So if there's one present, it's automatic 10-foot setback from that line.
Can I ask this question? Because, okay, when you're coming from.
So it's not.
So when you're coming from the pole to some of the older houses that are above ground surfaces that are going to your gooseneck up top.
Yeah, this would not apply to.
But that's an overhead utility service.
So the intent is for the main electric utility line, certainly not.
But you understand, I'm just trying to make sure we're clarifying this, we're clarifying this. But it's still called a service. It's called an above-ground service or an underground service. It's still called a service.
Rear and or side yard fences must be set back from any overhead electric utility line.
Utility lines.
Line, utility lines.
And they're live wires too, so I think it'd be a good thing that way too.
I mean, well, I guess it's up to you all in terms of.
You're talking about the piece that connects from there to the house.
Yeah, I'm talking about like from the pole to the house. If it's above ground, well, that's on the person's property. You know, if they couldn't put a fence now because it's an above-ground line.
But if we're just talking about back and side yards, so that process there.
I'm just trying to make sure that if we're saying that we're clarifying, if we're clarifying it, that we're clarifying it. So in the future, if someone else comes in and says, well, it says all electrical lines. Well, now you've got to move all fences.
Well, now, I think there's a difference.
It's a utility line.
I think there's a difference between an electric utility line and a service.
A service does not require easement.
Right.
The transmission line to where it all begins requires an easement for maintenance, repair.
I think we can simply add a statement that says this shall not apply to any residential service line or something.
Anything that requires an easement.
Anything in the past, say, five, 10 years that's been built, they don't do aerial one.
No, they do.
They do an underground.
And even some that's been remodeled, then switched to underground.
Switched to underground. But easement's just for the transmission.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Cable lines hang too low, in my opinion. You know, if you put your vote in and it hits a cable line, you know.
Somebody had taken, must have went by with something tall and taken the cable line.
All right, would you all like to vote on these regulations?
Can we ask what the, how are we phrasing this?
Yeah, so give me just a second here to advise you correctly.
I'm just trying to make sure we're covering our.
New service lines is what we're going to add, right?
Yeah, so in letter H, we'll just add a sentence after that that says, you know, this requirement shall not apply to individual service lines connecting the house to the electric utility line.
Yeah, or anything that requires an easement would be the other way of phrasing.
Yeah, that's the language that we have right now. That's the, we basically say you can't have the fence within the easement area. And we were just trying to make it clearer that if the overhead power line is there, you can't have the fence there. Some people don't realize there's an easement there, and so that was the goal of it. But certainly, we don't want to apply this restriction to an individual service line. And then the other concern that I heard from the planning board was if the applicant is making a significant alteration to their property, they'll have to comply with the fence requirements as part of the addition. they'll have to comply with the fence requirements as part of the addition or the additional modification and so forth. And so truthfully, I'm not exactly sure where to put that. And I'd like to just spend some time making sure we put it in the right place, but that's what we will put in place in the ordinance.
Can you make a aid to the H?
Um, that may be what we do. I probably want to just ask the town attorney what he would suggest on this, but we can include that provision in.
So do we need to vote on it now, come back with attorney to Julie?
Is there was one other question to add to this? I would like to include in the general ordinance, a map like this or this map. So we would get an appendix.
And that would be a little more clarifying.
If you do, I would say put like the street names or like some form of reference on there.
We can probably come up with a better map.
You can't really read the street names or where this is at.
You could do the street names and okay.
It does make you wonder what the colors mean, even though I don't think they mean anything to us or to anyone that was looking at it.
Well, if you're some people that's been around here forever, that some people can just look at things and know exactly where everything's at, like down to the inch.
Yeah, there should be some form of reference on it though, because not everybody's going to like.
You're calling me an old lady.
They probably know the deed book and page number.
Exactly, I think.
So. But I think, so it's really up to you all. I mean, if you all are confident or comfortable with us incorporating these changes and talking with the town attorney to include them, you can make a recommendation tonight to take it to the board of commissioners. If you'd rather see the specific language, we're happy to bring it back to you at your next meeting, but.
I'd make a motion that we do exactly what it is that we were just talking about.
Okay, so one more time, just to make sure everybody's clear. A provision that makes it clear that the restriction does not apply to an individual electric service line, only for the main electric utility lines. Another provision to require the fence to come into compliance if there's significant alteration to the property, i.e. site plan review by town staff for a zoning permit. And then finally, just reference the map as an appendix in the.
And make it a lot better map.
And a better map.
At least a couple of names on some streets so we can get an idea of where.
So with the permit thing, would that, would that just only be applicable to the properties in this map then? Or would like if someone that lives in Star Hill is just applying for a deck, do they have to submit all that extra stuff?
No, it would, it would only apply if there's an overhead utility line in the rear or side yard. So in most places, it's, it's either underground or it's on the street and there's plenty of room for the electric company to access it. It's only these rear side yards.
But that's a good question because it would apply to everywhere.
Can we write it to where like the, the, the extra step and money that they'd need in their permit is only required if they're, if this is applicable to them?
Yeah, if it's got, if it's got backyard utilities, it should apply to that, not front yard utilities. The problem with these, you got an easement in the front for the town and then they selected to put the utilities overhead in the backyard. Well, owner, he says, well, that my yard goes right there, so I'm, I won't even capture all of it. So they put a fence. So they happen to give an easement in the front and easement in the back. It would just pertain to the rear easements.
So where there is an easement of a utility line in the rear of the property.
Ted, have you found that the fences are back to back?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's where the neighbors don't get along.
What we're asking is to expand that opening for the utility people.
I, I don't perceive this would be any additional burden for people like in Star Hill North or Star Hill or Bay Shore. You know, if they're putting an addition on their house or building a deck or a garage, they're going to need a permit anyway, so it's going to be the same fee. So it shouldn't burden anyone in any way.
It just works, makes Julie work harder in certain areas.
I'll second the motion.
I made the motion, yes.
And I'm seconding the motion.
Exactly.
Everybody like to vote on it? And Frank, perhaps Carteret Craven could offer some suggestions that would please them and make this.
Yes, exactly, because that could be where they want to come through and they want to clean up certain things. And that's up to them because it's their easement.
Well, see, they, they couldn't get in there to clean up because the debris fell during the hurricane, fell on each side of the fence. And that was.
But I'm saying prior to, if they come through and they say, I'm sorry to the, or send letters to the homeowners saying that, hey, this is our easement, this has, that's up to, that's on them because it's their easement.
Yeah, I mean, I think Carteret Craven could certainly go in and make everybody move the fences now if they wanted to. I don't think they're going to take that heavy-handed approach unless it's an emergency situation, so.
But at some point, are they ever going to do underground service through there? Because this would solve some of, that would solve some of this problem.
Incredibly expensive.
And plus we're in a ditch town. Water for these type of areas is, underground lines is not good for.
So here, here's what we will do also. Once the actual language is drafted before it goes to the board of commissioners, I will email it to all of you so you can see it one last time. And if you have some concern, just give me a call. Julie's actually going to be out of town for a couple of weeks, but I'll send it to you probably a week before the board meeting, give or take, so.
All right, um, the next board of commissioners meeting is June 10th. And who would like to report to the board of commissioners? I'll be glad, okay. Looks like that. Who should be doing this one?
You're a good person, me.
Yeah, the vice chair spent twice, so I don't think I'd.
I was looking.
I guess I'll be around on June 10th.
When's the, when are they moving? Do they ever move? Well, I guess this year it hasn't fallen on any holidays where they move it.
All right, our next meeting will be planning board meeting is June 18th at 5:30.
I'll be out of town for the next two meetings, sorry.
Okay, you're going to miss the next two?
Yeah, the next two. You just, our travel plans just coincided with that.
Is there any town staff comment?
Yeah, just a, a quick update. So the board of commissioners at their meeting last Monday approved the ordinance to allow the common parking lots at the town homes. They also approved the town home development that you all reviewed at the last meeting. So those things are finalized. They tabled a decision on the new town center zoning district. They also tabled the decision on the Bog Sound Drive rezoning that you all discussed. I expect both of these to appear on the board's June 10th meeting agenda again for further discussion. We have completed the required public hearing for each of those. I'm sure the board will still take comments from people if they want to share comments, but that legal requirement has been met, so.
May I ask, Frank, why did the bog issue, Bog Sound issue not pass?
There were some, there were some concerns expressed by residents in that area, primarily about the potential for mobile homes being allowed on those 18 parcels that we talked about. That was the biggest concern that we heard. I will say that I thought there was some confusion in the audience that I tried to address, that basically there are seven vacant lots there. And some people, I think mistakenly thought that if the rezoning was not approved, that nothing would be built there. But I, I did clarify for everyone that people could build a house there now if they wanted to, as long as they can meet the setbacks and septic permit and all those kinds of things. So I think the biggest concern was either perhaps not understanding the issue correctly or concern about mobile homes going in those 18 parcels there.
The only thing I don't, I don't understand about that, and this is my opinion, Bay Shore was built basically for the blue collar worker to come down here and have a place. And I've heard a lot of backlash from this since I live over there. What makes the other people much better than somebody that's got a vacation mobile home? That's what I don't understand.
I wish.
As long as it's done.
May I ask this?
I got, where you know where I live, I got one on the left, one on the right. They're old, old houses, but the people keep them.
Yeah, I, I think that's a reasonable policy position to take, right? I mean, some of them are well taken care of and very nice homes, right? So.
And it's changed over the 14, 15 years that I've lived here from what it was the day one that I moved here. And it's, over time, it does change.
What is the restriction? Why is it restricted for mobile homes on that street?
I just don't see.
So the, the, the 18 parcels that you all reviewed at the last meeting are zoned R30. And so the R30 zone just does not allow mobile homes. Whereas the R10 zone, which is the rest of Bay Shore, does allow mobile homes. So if we rezoned it to R10, mobile homes would be allowed there. There's not that many other differences. I think really the only other key differences are that Marina is allowed in R10 and not allowed in R30. And there's one parcel with water in that area. And then the, the setbacks are slightly different, a little more favorable for someone, a little more flexible, I should say, for someone in the R10 zoning district, so.
But it was originally.
May I ask?
All be part of it.
May I ask this question? So I could go in there and buy a lot and put a garage on it?
Um, you, you certainly could. I mean, if you have a vacant lot and you want to put a garage on it, you could do that as long as you meet the town's requirements.
So right, right currently, right now, it'd be in a.
You could build a house on those lots right now if you.
I mean, R30, I can go build just a garage on that land.
I think it should be a dwelling, yeah.
Unless you build a garage with the mother law street patch, then it becomes a house, baby. But you never get to give it back.
Well, I know over in.
But we have allowed people to build a garage on a vacant lot if that's all we do with the parcel.
So then that would still.
That's what I'm saying, that currently we could put, somebody could buy it and put a, just a garage on it.
That they could. I mean, they could put a whole house on it as long as they meet the setbacks and get a septic permit and all those sorts of things.
I just did.
Sure.
And just like over by Paxton House, I mean, we let a gentleman put a garage in the back of the land saying he wasn't going to live in it, and then it become a house. So, you know. Who was that? The one up of the street.
One on Neptune.
Oh, yeah, on the water. On the water.
Yeah.
So somebody could go in there and build a garage at the R30 right now.
Yeah, I just think.
Well, if you would come to the meeting and express your views, I.
I was coming the last.
So let me.
Under the circumstances, well, my wife, and I trust me, my phone rang off.
Frank, let me ask you, what, what should we do to help these commissioners on their issue of the R30 to R10?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's really, that's really up to you all as individuals. I mean, if you have relationships with the commissioners, I think you certainly can talk with them about your thoughts and opinions on this. If you know residents in that area, you certainly can talk with them and share your perspective on it.
It goes back to the same thing like I told you.
The one, the one resident that did, uh, opposed that he has a garage on one lot. I mean, shit.
It, it goes back to what I said earlier. I'm about this lot, I bought it, and I'm building a house. You've lived there for years, I'm blocking your sunset. You should have bought the lot. You know, yes, people funny. Now, they in there. I mentioned that, I can ride down the road and see several houses down there that they're not taken care of.
Yeah, that were big expensive houses.
And I told some of the people that called me friends, I said, what makes you so much better than somebody in a mobile home?
Wasn't Mr. Lawrence the one that had an issue with the land? And he's, he's got a garage with a, just a hood on a piece of land. I'd rather see a free trailer there than.
I would too, and a trailer ain't a, people got the wrong idea for mobile.
I was just wondering about language on other, if there was any talk on any type of, and I don't even know what it would be under, but for certain businesses and I got a phone call, you know, I'm sure other people got a phone call on.
Yeah, we, we, we have not issued any permits for any new businesses in recent weeks.
Okay, so, other than the fact of us getting with these commissioners on this issue, maybe talking to them.
Yeah, that's, that's really up, up to you as an individual whether or not you want to advocate for it.
They've tabled it.
It will be on the agenda at the next meeting.
At the next meeting? And I'll be there to speak? Can I speak out of the audience for that?
Oh, you certainly can, yeah, if you want, wish to speak.
I was talking to one person, a commissioner, that, uh, he was going to check with a town attorney to where you could put stipulations that it has to be, that you're going to put a mobile home there, it has to be a modular mobile home. But then to kick back, that I got, everybody said they're going to put tiny homes there. I said, tiny homes are mobile home. Anything that's got a chassis under it, wheels is mobile.
Well, the, the only thing I would say is, so a modular home is really the same thing as a stick-built home.
It's a phrase exactly like a stick-built, it's just building a controlled environment.
But we have, and, and we would allow those in all of our zoning districts. The R10 zoning district is the only one that specifically allows a mobile home with, with wheels and axle chassis and all that stuff. And so if the board, or if you all and the board wanted to clarify some language and only require modular homes, you're essentially eliminating mobile homes for everybody. And you'd be doing that in that entire district.
But the present zone allows modulators.
That's right. So you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to change it to remove that because you'd be hurting a lot of people in that R10 zone.
There's a lot there at the very end of the street.
Is that anything the same as everything else?
The blue one at the very end now.
Yeah, I mean, again, it, it depends on the relationships you have with commissioners and citizens. And if you want to talk to them, please do.
Is it not true that under the present zoning of R30, if I had a vacant lot 50 feet wide, I could build a house as small as I wish? As long as I got a septic permit? And I don't think people understand that.
Because it used to have to be, what was it, 1,000 or 1,200, 100 square feet?
But that has gone out the window.
Yeah, I don't think we have any restrictions on that.
Because the state passed that law.
I was running, I ran into that when my mother's house burnt down and we were trying to build, you know, get something in to live in, you know, and I had to jump all those.
Julie, is there anything you want to add?
It's been busy. Nothing specific. I think in future months, we do have some proposed updates to the zoning ordinance that we'll be bringing to you. But we'll try not to put too much on any given agenda.
Yeah, the, the other thing too, as you may have heard me say before, the board has asked me specifically and actually just reiterated to me recently that they would like for us to simplify the UDO and take a comprehensive look at it. And I'm working on that right now, including addressing perhaps some undesirable uses that need clarification. That'll be forthcoming at some point, so.
That is undesirable, for whatever reasons, they're undesirable.
I've got a question.
Does anyone else on this board, a planning board, like to be at the meeting and discuss this R30, R10?
I'll come in, be in always.
Okay, and you can speak too if you'd like to.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, it's obviously, it's up to you how you want to proceed. If this is important to you, I would encourage you to reach out to any of the commissioners individually that you know prior to the meeting. You could also come to the meeting also, but probably would be good to just give them that courtesy to talk with them in private initially. It's up to you, you, you handle however you like.
Are we, are we doing right for you two as staffing?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right.
Are you still enjoying your job?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any additional planning board member comment? Is there a comment? Yes, I'd like to know any updates on a matter that I brought up before, and that's the gas line at Country Club Point. And what we're doing about that, if anything.
Yeah, truthfully, Paxton, I have not made any progress on that at this point in time. I'm happy to meet with the gas company out there and yourself to identify the best location, but.
No, they've already done that.
Well, in terms of the road and, and just kind of in the field, kind of lay it out and so forth. I'm comfortable with the drawings I've seen, they look fine to me, but just to be on site. But the, the bigger hurdle is I've got to identify the funding and perhaps the labor to actually widen the road in that area. I mean, I think the general thought was that we would widen it on the east side, so 10-foot width of rock base and asphalt for probably 400 feet, give or take. Talking with Ryan Hutchinson, our public works director, to see if that's something they might be able to do in-house. And it might be too big for them, but it's just, it's not going to be an inexpensive fix. And I've got to figure that out. And so the other thing too is that we do all of our resurfacing in one contract. And so we'll probably do that in the spring. So I would not expect anything to happen earlier than the spring. And then it's going to depend on. And then it's going to depend on the funding available. But I, I, I definitely want to correct it, I agree with your concerns and.
Well, just to bring everybody up.
I'm just going to reiterate, please don't lose the tree.
Yeah, I'm trying to save the tree, it's a beautiful tree.
Well, but it's not entirely healthy. I, I might get an arborist in to take a look at it. But just to bring everybody up to date again, and I'll pass this around. The, the pavement is actually in private property. And the gas company made it worse by installing a gas line outside the pavement, further into private property. And when I saw the, uh, uh, we, we can pass it this way. And when I saw the, uh, flags, I got in touch with the gas line and said, you can't leave this gas line inside this private property. And they said, oh dear, we didn't know, we'll abandon it. Well, I'm going to make them remove it. I don't want a gas line abandoned.
Yeah, because it would eventually sink or.
Well, I just, I mean, I think it's a danger. I don't care if they blow it out, I don't want it anyway. But then the issue becomes, where is the right of way going to be? Now, we have, we have precedent to this. We had a, a, literally a paved road in Star Hill that was cut and removed in section A Star Hill. And, uh, and, and it says on the recorded map, you want to see it? Existing road to be relocated. And indeed, it was relocated. So there's, there's a precedent, we, we all, we, we're all, uh, in agreement that there is no recorded right of way where the tree is.
Yeah, you, you, you know, Paxton, one thing that we could talk about at a later date is, you know, if, if, if you're amenable to it, it may be possible to do some sort of land swap also and, and not remove the asphalt or the tree and perhaps acquire that land for the right of way, but give up right of way on the other side.
Not possible.
That's fine.
Not possible, no. You're talking about two different owners, two different owners.
The 299 acres is blown to who?
Me.
I thought the other property on the other side.
18 is owned by all the heirs of the golf course, undivided into, the same as lot 29.
Well, at any rate, that would be worth considering if there's an opening there. If not, then I'll certainly proceed with what we discussed previously.
And I, I want to reiterate that I'm not impatient. I'm quite willing to wait and work and, and, but it just needs to be addressed. Because it's an old problem that, you know, and as the tree gets older, it's a beautiful tree, but it might not live.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But I'm not going to kill it. I'm not going to be the one to bulldoze it. But just wanted to bring that up and ask about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd be better off widening the asphalt on the east side of the existing road, even if we get a little closer to the edge of the right of way because the ground kind of raises up going to the tree and you might compromise the roots.
But as far as this spring, that's no go. We're on the verge of adopting the budget and there's no money in the budget for that.
Well, then there may be possible to do a budget amendment at some point in time. It really depends, I just really need some time to investigate the cost and how difficult it would be with our staff to do it.
Would you use the power funds for that?
Um, potentially, not necessarily, so.
Thank you. May I ask you a question for, uh, I've called about having a gas line put down the June road. How much trouble is that?
I talked to the gas company because I deal with them on a regular basis.
Did you talk to Mike?
Uh huh. And I would love to have natural gas because I got a whole house generator, I got gas appliances. And the problem I had on Bay Shore is I got a lot of weekenders in old trailers. They come on weekends, they don't care about natural gas, they got an AOP tank sitting out there looking like a honey.
Right.
You have to get a percentage of people to sign saying that they will use natural gas.
Right, that's what he told me.
See, they just put it over there on Channel View because everybody signed. I'd love to have it because a whole house generator burns a lot of AOP.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, I just had an inquiry from Star Hill, uh, earlier today. And, uh, Michael Lilly from Duke Energy said that they've sent out numerous surveys to people in Star Hill and nobody ever wants it. So they haven't installed it.
They, they've said multiple times that they've sent stuff out. But yet we don't ever see.
He, he gave me a handful of flyers and he said, Ted, what, how far down the road you live? I said, well, I don't, I'm a little ways from the front 24. He said, just hand them out up to your house. And if you can get people in front of it, they bring it down to your house.
Yeah, they would love to add it.
Yeah, and I'd love to have it.
Well, it would be financially beneficial for the homeowner. Well, he told me when I asked him about natural gas to the townhouses that they could sign up and get it because it's already going into the Star Hill restaurant. He said, if they only put in a water heater for each of those 12 units, they could get it.
Right.
They could get it with no cost to the developer.
They got to revisit with him and.
Well, Sydney, my wife, because I've talked to him too, okay? We got the Millers down there and they've got all that big gas stuff, so maybe they would agree, so it becomes always in.
Because if you, if you sign, say, yes, I want it, you had to have so many people to make the construction be worthwhile to feed my gas. So they're signing a contract saying, once the gas is there, I'm going to hook up, you're going to set a meter in, I'm going to use natural gas. A lot of people don't even have gas. So they would have to change to a Renai or this or that.
Well, they, tell everybody they can have a gas grill.
Yeah, you got to have a little more, man. It's a good thought.
Hey, I had a gas grill, I have a gas grill.
I, I revisit it with him because I, I'd love to have it.
Yeah, like, you know, anyway, how did, uh, what's the street over there that got the whole gas line put in? You mean Country Club Point? Was it Country?
Yeah, that's the one that.
Were they the ones that got the whole circle done?
Yes.
Yeah, Yoko got it all.
They have both streets on Country Club Point now.
Yeah, because so many of them have, have generators and, and everything else is where.
Uh, Frank, I also. I also want to thank you for getting gravel in the hole. It was bad, wasn't it?
Our guys were glad to put it there.
You, the town used that, right?
We did that, yes.
Uh, I can't think of the gentleman name that takes care of our road. He'll take care of that road for you with DOT.
Um, a town employee or a DOT employee?
At North Carolina Department of Transportation, because that's a highway.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
And he'll fix those holes for you.
But our staff put some gravel in out there.
Yeah, it was bad.
Yeah, 58, yeah.
They took the right amount of gravel in there because, um, it seemed kind of like the kind that doesn't break down. And it looked like almost like fall bearings flying across the road. When it came out of the ditch they put it in on the side. It had come up out on top of the road and it was like, driving on fall bearings almost.
Honestly, I'm not sure what type they put in there, but I'm happy to ask them.
I've got one question.
It's going to be the kind that like breaks down if you drive in it so that it doesn't turn into that situation?
Fight more, more.
But if, that curve was so bad, if you ran off of it, it would have cut the inside of your tire. That's how deep it was. It's pretty deep. But there's a gentleman that works for North Carolina Department of Transportation, Frank. And I called him the wrong name for three years, he never corrected me. But I would call him and he would take care of Taylor Ocean Road for me, all the potholes and especially the one at Hannymore. So just call, see who our rep is down there.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to take a look at the gravel again and try to start better.
And check with him, he'll fix those holes for you. And he, he, we'd always do it within a day.
The question I have is, I've heard through the grapevine that the Wells Fargo building is leased to a vape shop?
We'll discuss things later. We'll discuss things later.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's my.
Oh, I had one other thing I was going to ask and I've forgotten it, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Am I right?
I'm going to make, I'm going to make a German. Klexa, baby.
Yeah, we, we, we haven't, we haven't issued any commercial permits and we don't have anything pending at the moment right now. That's a permitted use, so we'll be working on some improvements in the future.
I just have a little concern over the signage.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm good.
Well, that brings up another question ahead. You know, there have been three ATMs put in the shopping center parking lot. And I would like to know if there is sufficient parking existing in the shopping center conforming to our regulations. Now, if there's not, and if that.
I'm lost.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay, in the shopping center, when it was built, there were requirements for the number of parking spaces for the shopping center. Okay, since it was built, 9,000 square feet has been added to the shopping center. The, 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 uh, gas sales place has been added. And it actually used part of the shopping center property for its septic area. Okay, well, since the two, the bank and the savings and loan or whatever they were, that's now become Starbucks and the credit union have been obliterated, one's a gas station and one's Starbucks. Those ATMs are now in the shopping center parking lot, taking up parking. Okay, is the same owner of the Wells Fargo building the same owner as the shopping center? Perhaps he needs to establish that there are sufficient parking places before he does anything else with that building.
Paxton, when I was commissioner, had this state employees credit union teller over there. I think there was a requirement of three spaces for that teller.
But that's gone.
Yeah.
That's gone.
But, so you're talking about that.
The shopping center, I'm talking.
Those two. But you know, one of them, uh, ATMs don't ever stay there long. It's like when the VCB bank went out, they put one out there because they don't got a bank no more.
There are three new.
Yeah, because state employees got moved over here.
Yeah, I think the, the Wells Fargo building itself, there's an abundance of parking there. As I recall from our research when we considered purchasing it, that there was more parking there than was actually required under the UDO. Now, with regard to any ATMs taking up parking spaces, I don't know the answer to your question and we'd have to research that.
Well, I mean, that.
But see, once they, if this one has more in there in the same building, how this is the count of parking.
Well, it could, or maybe.
No, I think, I think we would consider the Wells Fargo as a standalone parcel. We would consider that as a standalone, um, use, depending on whatever was going to go in there and how many parking spaces they'd require, so.
You got more people coming down there. But didn't we make a motion to adjourn? We got a second, so we kind of have.
So we all adjourn?
All right, thank y'all. I, I'll email you all the.